Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call our Board of Supervisors meeting to order for October the 3rd, 2023, the PM meeting. And the first thing we always have on our PM meetings is a citizen forum. And that's where anyone can come and speak on any issue that's not on the agenda. And we allow you three minutes to speak. And we ask that you give your name and the magisterial district that you live in. And we have a sign up sheet, so I'll call the ones that have signed up first. And after that, you can raise your hand and come up and speak if you so desire to speak. So I'll go ahead and open the citizen forum. And first up, I think it's Robin, and I can't pronounce the last name. It's Meganogo, maybe?
Don.
Yes.
Excuse me, does one of the matters like come up first and kind of give an overall?
Sure. Come ahead, come ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Fowler. I've been a resident of Culpeper County, specifically on gravel road in the Stevensburg District for well over 15 years. I mentioned residing on gravel road because that's the reason a group of us are here before you this evening. We gathered documentation supporting our concerns, which is in front of you in those booklets. Gravel Road is a private dead end gravel road. Lord Willing subdivision was started in 1990. The further portion was later planned as an equestrian community under the Huntmaster Estates subdivision. For over 30 years, this has been a private road funded and maintained by the residents as per the road maintenance agreements. The residential traffic associated with the 25 homes approaches the limits of what this road is capable of handling. Serious problems began to develop in 2020 when Charming Hill Farm was created. They continue to worsen as Charming Hill Farm continues to expand and increases the number of clientele it attracts. Gravel Road does not meet VDOT standards for public traffic. The road is one lane with steep hills and blind curves. This has been dangerously aggravated by the increase in traffic caused by Charming Hill Farm. The posted 15 mile per hour speed limit signs are ignored, which has led to numerous almost head-on collisions. One of our residents was actually forced off the roadway into the ditch by an out-of-county school bus. Our own county school buses do not even travel down gravel road because it's a private road. The situation came to a head during the Culpeper Farm Tour days when despite numerous complaints to the zoning committee about these increasing problems, the county promoted Charming Hill Farm with the Fox 5 morning news in the DC metro area. This led to well over 700 visitors on our private road for one weekend. Traffic, dust, noise, several near accidents made for an absolute miserable weekend for the residents. Horse-owning residents can no longer consider safely riding their horses on gravel road or the bridle path. It's not much safer for pedestrians and dog walkers due to the dust and gravel that's kicked up by these speeding cars. In 2023, the assessed real estate value of gravel road property surrounding Charming Hill Farm is over 18 million, with those residents paying close to 85,000 in annual real estate property taxes. Not a penny was applied to maintenance of our road by the county or state. County law enforcement can't even assist us by enforcing traffic violations because it's a private road. According to the agritism detramation attachment B provided by Culpeper County, factors of consideration include traffic generation and the number of vehicle trips would need to be considered in relation to the excess availability of the subject site, which, as existing, are proposed entrance improvements and what type of roads being accessed, primary or secondary road, paved or unpaved, public or private. The document also states introducing large volumes of traffic onto private road will often dictate that there is substantial impact. Many gravel road residents will find it quite disturbing that Charming Hill provided misleading and incorrect information on the agritourism activity factors of consideration questionnaire. It would appear that the zoning complaints filed against Charming Hill and the increased traffic volume were not considered. We ask that you review this situation and stop the traffic that Charming Hill Farm is bringing onto gravel road. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay. Okay. Robin?
My name's Robin McGonigal, and I've lived here five years. I'm from Arlington, five minutes from Washington DC. So I'm accustomed to seeing people from DC and whatever come through our neighborhood. We had several break-ins. I've had fuel siphoned from my vehicles. And that's kind of what I moved out here for was peace and quiet time with my horses. And it's private, it's rural, and it's close to town. But road maintenance is an issue. The extra and regular drivers in excess to our own normal transportation needs is an issue. Road dust is an issue. It turns out that the airflow flows in my direction. So sometimes I see a big cloud of the road dust that's as big as my house. My horses are in the pasture breathing that in. And when I'm mowing, then I'm breathing that. So that's not really good. And most importantly, I bought here because our community is off the beaten path and still close to town. We're private here, and not many people know that we're back there. And when I had my new barrier come out to take care of my horse's feet, he didn't even know it was there. So I felt that I was safe there. But not so much if we have a lot of people coming in from near and far. I feel some of my safety is, I don't feel as safe as I did before, depending upon people who, you know, hopefully they're nice people coming in to cuddle the goats. But other people can also come and decide that, you know, maybe this is a nice place to, you know, whatever they want to do. So some of my safety is the atmosphere for me is taken away. So thank you for your time.
Daniel Taylor?
I'd like to speak last.
I'm sorry, sir. I mean, I'm calling it the order that I received, the sheets.
So gravel road has been established for about 30 years, and he's been the newest person to come in to start this. You know, it started as Lord Wellington subdivision, and it was for 10 homes. It was a cul-de-sac. And then it got blown out for an additional 15 homes. The structure's not big enough for it. Nothing about this is VDOT approved. The aggregate that's on the road, the crown of the road, the runoff of the road, the ditches of the road, none of this, none of those jobs, you know? In the winter months, the road is soiled, we can stick a semi in it, we have to have heavy wreckers come back and pull them out and stuff like that. There's two different road agreements between the two subdivisions, you know, that we maintain and do all this with. You know, it's just, it's not, it's just not going to handle the volume of this stuff. And yeah, like I said, I was going to go last and finish up on some other things. I want their speeches to go through, so that's all I have for this.
Pam McKenney?
My name's Pam McKenney. I live in Stevensburg District in Brandy Station. My husband and I moved here in 2006. I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Supervisors to stop the influx of public traffic on our private gravel road due to Charming Hill Farm. There are two subdivisions in gravel road. Lord Willing, which is the first, coming off the secondary road, Old Holly. Then there's Huntmaster Estates, which is an equestrian community. Once you enter Huntmaster, gravel road is also our bridle path. Gravel Road is a private road that feeds our private subdivisions at the beginning of the road. It states no public access and no state maintained private drive, no trespassing. I moved here because I was wanting to be off the well beaten path. I wanted to raise my horses, train my horses, and ride my horses in safety, which I should be able to do. Another reason is to enjoy the peace and quiet. We are all small farmers, retired military, retired police officers, business professionals, and stay-at-home moms. We are all neighbors, but most of us are very good friends. We look out for each other. We know what vehicles come, we know what vehicles go. We know what belongs and what doesn't belong. Now here lies the problem. Charming Hill Farm is the problem. We are zoned Ag 1, but that is not gospel. Agritourism is not gospel for the laws on agriculture. We are also residential. Charming Hill Farm affects 24 other properties in our neighborhoods. We have provided you a notebook with all the evidence and documentation, well, not all. We have many, many videos, more evidence, more than you could ever need to make your determination. We are asking that you shut this down immediately due to the fact that there is a substantial negative impact on the health, safety, and general welfare of every other residents that live in our neighborhoods. We have obtained the agritourism activity factors of orientation and agritourism declaration for Charming Hill Farm. There were multiple answers that were flat-out lies. The correct answers are provided in your notebook. The owner also speaks of adding more and more events such as overnight camping. They're bringing in more and more people from the city. As I said, this is an equestrian community, but it is too dangerous for anyone to even ride. Can't ride, I can't ride my horse. My friends can't ride their horses. How fair is that? It's very, very dangerous. People coming from the city have no idea to have to drive around horses. They don't know what a caution horse signs mean. They do not know that a horse has to be trained to accept a vehicle. They have no clue. If I get out and ride right now with 16 rods in my pins in my back, it's a death sentence to me with the vehicles coming down that road. Do we need to be hit head-on? Do we need personal property damage? Do we need to get injured or our pets injured or killed before somebody realizes that this is a very volatile and dangerous situation that needs to be stopped immediately? Enough is enough. Thank you for your time.
Dawn Haidt?
Good evening, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Dawn Haidt, Stevensburg. Support Culpeper Farms and their businesses. Support programs that help farmers to continue the farm. One government program is the small-scale solar of 20 acres or less. This program supports farmers with zero impact on surrounding properties. No new transmission lines like the approved data centers will need. No destruction and taking of property like the new data center's transmission lines will cause. Small-scale solar is a smart and viable solution to help farmers. If Culpeper claims to be a farming community, then you need to help all the farmers, not just select few in Stevensburg. We need to help the farmers in Cedar Mountain as well as those in Catawba. With this year's drought, the farmers need our help. Mr. Stafford gave an amazing speech this morning about the drought level, the groundwater levels, and their decline. The recently approved data center will drill many wells and steal precious fresh water from Culpeper Farms in the community. Water needed for livestock, stock, water needed for crops, water needed for their families. Not only farmers are affected, but many Culpeper families, like you and I, all have wells that will be impacted. I am an organic farmer, and city water isn't an option to me, a high organic status. The Amazon data center was rushed to pass by our Board of Supervisors. They never took into consideration nor did they ask the applicant where or if any transmission lines were going to be needed. It suggests that now the Culpeper citizens will be faced with a rate increase because the ultimately Dominion passed all construction costs to its users. You can thank our Board of Supervisors for not doing their homework on the Amazon project. This should have been avoided, this would have been avoided if the Board of Supervisors simply had listened to the citizens. Now our Board are proposing to delete all text zones except for one, trying to push all data centers in that area. Simply put, one bad decision does not deserve another bad decision. This only confirms that the Amazon project should have never been approved in the first place. It confirms that our Board never did their homework and refused to ask any questions of Amazon about the transmission lines, nor none whatsoever. They simply approved the Amazon site at the expense of the Culpeper residents. Now they are saying that they won't approve a site before knowing exactly where the transmission lines will run. In the last five years, the residents of Culpeper County have been asking them to do such things, but unfortunately, it's too late. The Culpeper residents have been coming here and speaking to only approve solar and data centers on existing industrial sites with the adequate infrastructure to support them. Citizens have been sending the Board of Supervisors thousands of pages and reports of data to support this, only in existing industrial zone property with the adequate infrastructure to support them. The Amazon site is a prime example of what happens when the Board doesn't listen. The Board hasn't listened for the residents for the last five years, and it's time for them to listen now. But their quick fix would only cause greater problems. Why? Because once again, the Board won't listen to Culpeper citizens. There are three types of people. People who make things happen, people who watch things happen, and people who have no idea what's happening. Culpeper residents, make your own decision. The time is well overdue for the Board of Supervisors to listen, and hopefully they will listen this time. Culpeper residents have been advising the Board for well over five years to do the right thing. Only approve solar and data centers on existing industrial properties with the adequate infrastructure to support them should be approved. Stop destroying our beautiful farmland as always. Please support Culpeper Farm and community, and may God continue to bless Culpeper County and its residents. Thank you.
That's all we have that are signed up. Yes, sir.
I didn't know I was coming, otherwise I might have dressed up like. I'll be real quick. My name is Ray Butler, Cedar Mountain District. The past three years, especially during COVID, my wife and I spent a good time in the car burning gas and riding around through Culpeper, Orange, the Rapidan area, Rappahannock. So with my passion of real estate, I've enjoyed looking at it because I can't afford to buy any of it. But I noticed a couple things. Recognizing that the Board, it's not y'all's responsibility, but it's a responsibility to the county. And what I noticed, don't take my word for it, get in the car and ride, I would say that 98% of all ponds in these counties have scum on them, water's not running. And what that does, that attracts a certain amount of mosquitoes. If you do some research on it, you'll find out what the real problem is. Wildlife and so forth drink from these ponds. The lakes is not so much an issue, but it's ponds. And one of the things that will cure that is that, and I'm not going to pronounce this right, but there's a system that you can put in, in a pond, that aerates all the water and gets everything going. You say, well, all the owner's got to do, not every owner can afford to go do that. If it's done by electric, like a little solar panel, doesn't cause any electricity, but that would be one of the issues that would help all the people in Culpeper, at least the wildlife and so forth. So put that on your little burner. The other thing that we noticed, and I'm not talking about gravel road. You know, when a gravel driveway meets a gravel road, that's not the subject. But when a gravel road meets an asphalt road, there's a problem. And the problem is rocks in the road. And I noticed maybe a half a dozen places where the gravel's in the road and it's from the driveway. And you and I both know now, I mean, the last one I paid was like $350 for a windshield. And the happy owner is not going to pay for your windshield. They call it road hazard. And a cure for that is, is real simple, is that when Billy Bob builds a new house, part of his requirement is, before he gets an OP, and who approves the OP, it has to have a final inspection so it doesn't cost the taxpayer one dime, doesn't cost the county a dime, but that county inspector has to come out there and approve that house, and that's when he can turn around and look and say, okay, that 10 or that 12, that 15 foot from the asphalt back into that driveway has been asphalt, and you don't have the rocks in the road. So that's something that y'all need to sit there and talk about and find out just because there's a lot of new houses this, we all know that. The last thing, my heart goes out to these people because I've been here my whole life. I started out on Laggard Road. That was a private road, about roughly a half mile long. And I actually got the road maintenance agreement, and I was the only guy that was spending all his money taking care of the gravel road. Now I still live, I moved and I still live on a private road, it's a mile long of gravel. And we have a road maintenance agreement, and it seemed like only the Butlers are really, you know, it's shared, but I know what they're going through. And it's from poor planning. Not today, poor planning back 20 years ago when this, and it's all, and I'll talk about it next time I come up, it's because of zoning, of what y'all doing. And I've been to the county for 20, 30, 30 years, and I've talked to Mr. John, and that there's a major problem in this county, and it's been reflective, and you've had some examples the past three years ago. It's that because of the, everything is agriculture, agriculture. I've moved out of a subdivision, and it was agriculture, and it's only a three-acre lot. Okay. I got you. So anyway, I'll be back a lot.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I'm primarily representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. I know there has been a lot of emphasis on the transmission aspect of data center development in Culpeper County, and I wanted to take this opportunity to emphasize that the transmission of energy is one side of the energy crisis that we are currently facing due to unchecked growth from a single industry. Culpeper County requires roughly 240 megawatts to support the 20,000 homes, industry, and other commercial enterprises that are currently in operation. I expect you are familiar with this number as it was the basis for the 240, 2400 acre cap on utility scale solar in the new solar policy. However, this 240-megawatt footprint is going to change dramatically when the 7.5 million square feet of data centers that have already been approved begin to come online. Starting with Cloud HQ, this facility is advertised for 275 megawatts of load, more than the entire footprint of the county right now. The Culpeper Technology Campus, which was approved this spring, is expecting to need 600 megawatts, and Copper Ridge is also expected to need 600 megawatts, which was approved in September. Between those three campuses, we can expect an electrical footprint of nearly 1,600 megawatts, enough to power 400,000 homes at peak load. That number does not include the anticipated demand from Marvell or Red Ace or the proposed Yellow Digital Infrastructure Campus, which by their own admission expects to need 300 megawatts of power. This means that the anticipated energy demand of Culpeper County is nearing, if not exceeding, the entire output of the Lake Anna nuclear power plant, which accounts, which according to Dominion's website, powers 450,000 homes and accounts for 17% of Virginia's energy production. All the more concerning is that we are seeing similar patterns of massive data center approvals in Louisa, Orange, and Spotsylvania Counties, all of which border Lake Anna, which, as we know, may not be able to meet the increased needs of Culpeper, let alone all of these other facilities that are being approved concurrently. We know that Dominion will need to bring new energy production online to power data centers in Virginia, which will be expensive for all of us who buy power from them and will take time. Keep in mind, this may also be the power, the type of power production that this county does not want to see. And while we wait for this new production to appear, we may be subject to grid instability like we have never seen before, including rolling blackouts during times of peak load like the height of winter or summer. Culpeper currently cannot produce and has no control over the power that will be needed for this industry to produce the tax revenue that they have promised. Moreover, continued approval of data centers will not only impact our local grid, but will also contribute to this much larger energy crunch. I encourage you to consider this when you are reviewing new data center proposals and considering county incentives for this industry. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristi Vick, and I live on gravel road. I happen to be one of the property owners right at the big hill in Huntmaster Estates. And I'm very concerned that we haven't gotten the attention that is deserved in this matter. If the Culpeper Economic Development Office is going to promote farm tour, they're going to send Charming Hill Farm on Fox 5 News, then somebody needs to give me a certificate of liability because that hill is dangerous, is a private road, and no one is giving us any money for this. If you're going to sign off on it with Culpeper County, then I think that somebody ought to provide us with the insurance because legally, I don't know how you can promote something that you just flat-out don't have any governance over. It's dangerous. People go flying on that hill. You'd be surprised at things that go on back there. And I just don't understand how Culpeper can sign off on this and think that this is a good idea. Has any of you come out and seen this? Seen what the road is like? When you first come down gravel road at the Lord Willing Farm Park, it's a huge drop-off. You can't pass two cars. These people don't know that. So who's going to handle the liability of this when somebody gets killed? We've put in numerous things through the zoning department. We're told that because only two people have come in, that it's, you know, apparently not a big issue. More than two people have filled out the forms. It is causing a lot of harm to our daily lives. Somebody is going to get killed. And I'm telling you, if somebody goes off that hill and I get sued for it, guess who I'm going to? Culpeper County, because y'all keep sending these people down there. 700 people in two days. Ridiculous. The pockets of cash that that man made, I mean, that's all it was about. He was all over Facebook about how his pockets were lined for the next several months to feed his animals. I mean, I have to pay to feed my own animals. It just, it's not the working farm that should be promoted in the agritourism. And we're not going to, you know, shut, continue with this. We'll come every month. Somebody needs to come down there. I invite all of you. There's any one of my neighbors that'll give you a tour, show you the road, show you the concerns. But we've all called. Who's our Stevensburg person? Ms. Gugino? Did I say that right? I mean, I've spoke to you a couple of times about it. Have you come down? Really? It's a private road. But the 700 people that were sent down by Culpeper County agritourism is okay?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We don't, we don't comment back and forth, but thank you. We hear you. We hear you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the citizen forum and go into the agenda approval and any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight. Move for approval. All in favor of the motion, signify I'm saying aye. Aye. Okay. Moving on to general county business. The Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing and consider adoption of amendments to Appendix D of the Culpeper County Code. And I'm going to turn this over to Sam McLaren.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, we do have one item of public hearing tonight, and that's to look at Appendix D, which is currently entitled our Agricultural Lands Preservation Program. While it's been on the books since 2007, September 2007, the county has not used that code section to date. It was addressed in the recent comprehensive plan efforts that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors as a potential tool to help fulfill some of the goals that are in the comprehensive plan. The Rules Committee, the Agricultural and Forest Advisory Committee have recently looked at this Appendix D and have suggested some potential revisions if the Board so chooses to adopt those, in hopes and efforts that potentially this program could become alive and well. Mr. Chairman, we do have a brief presentation to kind of walk through what the program or ordinance could look like, and it just kind of explains in real basic terms. It's not going to go through the red line example that's posted on Board Docs. That's there if someone wanted to enjoy reading that as well. But this just goes over the program in general. And if I could, I'm going to get Mr. Perman to go- And if I could, I'm going to get Mr. Perman to go through that and just share some basic tenets of the ordinance itself and the program.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, before you use a quick little presentation of just what the Conservation Easement Program, which was originally called the Appendix, the Agricultural Rural Lands, I do believe it was called? Yes. What this could possibly look like. So for those who aren't, whether on the board or in the public, aren't fully aware of how conservation easements works, they're more or less nonpossessory interests in a public, of a public body in real property through voluntary means to preserve rural land. Basically, this is where the landowner will sell or give up their rights to develop to the conservation easement holder, which in this case would be the county of Coal Pepper, while still being able to own the land and use that land in terms of residency, agricultural production, et cetera. They maintain full ownership and easements in a conservation easement program, easements can be either donated to the county or they can be purchased through a purchase of development rights, shortened to PDR, acquisition. Both are types of procedures that we see multiple localities as well as nonprofits throughout the Commonwealth use. To name a few, there's Clark County, there's Fauquier County, I do believe Stafford, and Spotsylvania County use them. I do believe Loudon is looking at it or already has one. Albemarle as well, as well as many nonprofits such as the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. Why specifically do, would the county be interested in having such a program? First and foremost, to preserve the rural character of the county and its open space and thus also conserving and protecting environmentally sensitive lands, waters, and resources. Additionally, especially through the PDR method of acquisition, this could provide additional support to agricultural operations in terms of land-rich but not necessarily cast-rich farming operations, being able to sell their ability to develop so they can use that funds to reinvest in their property and for their businesses. Additionally, other benefits of why the county would want to look and would want to have a program such as this would, to promote and enhance these lands as important industries that contribute to the maintenance of our diverse and healthy local economy, since agriculture has been and still is a major pillar of Coal Pepper identity and economic development. Additionally, in regards to zoning and the comprehensive plan, it helps, assists in shaping the character and direction and timing of community development and additionally reduces and defers the need for major urban infrastructure improvements in the county and the expenditure of public funds for such improvements. Obviously, such a program, whether it was to have both donations and a purchase of development rights program or either or, there would be eligibility requirements. After going through the Ag and Forestral Committee and the Rules Committee, staff has been able to create a list of eligibility requirements for a landowner to participate. Specifically, they'd have to have a minimum of 20 acres, whether in a single parcel or in multiple parcels. These parcels must be capable of being subdivided or developed for non-agricultural uses without rezoning. Use subject to conservation easements must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Portions of the parcels set aside in other agreements shall not be included, so say if it was proffered in another rezoning as open space or something like that. Additionally, terms of the easement must be consistent with the deed of easement. Parcels must obtain at least 105 points in the ranking system unless waived by the Board of Supervisors, and we will get into that ranking system a little further in the presentation. Additionally, part, these parcels cannot be in any other conservation easement. And finally, if the applicant is applying for a purchase of development rights acquisition, the parcel or parcels must be working agricultural and/or forestal use proven by Schedule F or county land use taxation. The typical process of how one would go about is the applicant would apply to the program indicating whether this would be a donation or PDR acquisition. This would go to the Ag and Forestral Committee for review and assigning points based off of the ranking system. The application would then be referred to the Board of Supervisors for initial approval. After that step, if this was through a purchase of development rights, an appraisal would be done to determine the value. The application would then be referred back to the Board of Supervisors for final approval once that value has been established. And then if it is passed by the board, the application would be processed, the easement would be created. And finally, there'd just be continually monitoring and enforcement by staff or whoever is partnering with the county in terms of that easement. A quick little review on scoring. We basically have three categories while going through the whole scoring system. First and foremost is preventing rural sprawl, which is to ensure potential easements would conserve lands that would fall in line with the comprehensive plan's goals regarding growth and development. This section takes into account, say, development vulnerability based off of DCR's environmental natural heritage mapping. Additionally, it takes into account our future land use map and our comprehensive plan in general. The second, the second section is environmental and historic cultural conservation, which is ensuring the potential easement would conserve lands of environmental or historic importance such as prime ag soils and natural water features. This again uses data from sources such as DCR in to quantify how much or if there is a presence of environmentally or culturally significant land. Finally, we have a bonus section for exceptional applications that have qualities that most would not have, but we don't want to penalize them for not having, such as being a part of an identified ecological core or being a century farm or forest as designated by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Finally, funding sources for this. There are two primary sources, local funding and grants. Local funding can include things such as rollback taxes, monetary proffers from developments, donations, and other sources. Grants, most grants require matching funds. So far, staff has been working with the two primary state-level grant programs from Vdax and from DCR. The Vdax grant would, is a, is a flat rate grant that funds a whole entire program, while DCR is application-specific based on the property you are trying to conserve at that time. And that's the overview of the Conservation Easement Program.
Thank you, Harrison.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. We do have this advertised for a public hearing tonight, so we would, we'd hope to be able to at least accomplish that tonight. Once again, I just want to reiterate that this is one potential tool for the toolbox for accomplishing some of the goals. And really, what I see is a main goal in the comprehensive plan. It's a tool that we've had in existence, just not in use, and we're hoping that something, an ordinance revision might put it into use. But again, it still takes the will of the board and funding, whether that comes from local sources, as Harrison mentioned, or grants or a combination thereof. So still, other things that would need to be built in place if the ordinance is even revised, so.
Any questions for staff or comments before we open a public hearing? Okay. So this issue requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now for anyone that would like to come and speak. Yes, ma'am.
I'm so lucky to get to hear from me twice tonight. All right. Sarah Parmley with Piedmont Environmental Council. I'd first like to thank the Agricultural and Forestral Advisory Committee, as well as the Rules Committee and county staff for their tremendous work on this update to the Agricultural and Rural Lands Preservation Ordinance, now called the Conservation Easement Program. The Piedmont Environmental Council is in full support of this program. The Conservation Easement Program represents an opportunity for the county to fulfill the express wishes of the Coal Pepper community as laid out in the comprehensive plan to maintain Coal Pepper's rural agricultural nature and prevent sprawl. Land preservations like this are also an important way we can lower barriers of entry to new farmers and ensure that we always maintain a land base to provide the necessary food, fiber, and water that we need to live. Conserved land may not bring the tax revenue of other land uses, but it also does not require the expansion of infrastructure and county services, since trees and cows do not require seats in classrooms, community water and sewer facilities, or new roads like industrial and residential developments are likely to do. There are also many ecosystem services that conserved land can provide. Forest land in particular plays a key role in protecting our water resources, not only by intercepting and filtering rainfall, but also by stabilizing soils and cooling streams. As recent conversations in Coal Pepper, as well as many other counties in Virginia have emphasized, the protection of our water resources is crucial to Virginia's continued well-being. The Coal Pepper County Conservation Easement Program will be guided by the comprehensive plan so that land conservation occurs where appropriate. Moreover, this program already exists in the Coal Pepper Code, even if it has not seen practical application. This update will not require that the county accepts easements, but it makes the Conservation Easement Program current with the state recommended standards so that when and if the county does decide to accept or purchase an easement, they can potentially have access to different funding sources and valuable technical support. We encourage you to adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm still Ray Butler from Cedar Mountain. This kind of shows what I've been talking about. I'm not anti-development. In fact, I'm just the opposite. I don't have a problem with, with building of nice homes. I just like spreading the homes out, you know? The worst thing I hate is an apartment building and then a townhouse. I like houses on anywhere from 25 up to 50 acres. That's what I like. I want to go back. This is agricultural, and here's the problem with, with, here's the major problem. Please hear me. If you, example, if you have a 400 acre tract of land, and you got 150 acres of forest, you got 200 acres of corn and soybeans, and the rest of it is pasture, the forest is a forestry. It's not agricultural. Example of, you wouldn't sit there and call Cedar Mountain agricultural when there's nothing but a forest up there and you can't grow anything up there. But I guarantee you, and without even looking, it's probably zoned agricultural. This good land that should remain agricultural, keep growing it, and we need to keep that herded. But there's a lot of land that is junk land in Coal Pepper. And if you can find a perk site and put in a subdivision over there, if it's a quality, I don't mind cluster. If you have 100 acres and you want to sit there and use a 10-acre zoning and put 10 houses on 10 acres, the other 90 acres is for perpetuity to, that always remains agricultural, that's good. That's good development. But the mindset of coming in and paying someone for the development rights when a third of their land doesn't perk them, then why would you pay them? I mean, it's all it is, just pasture land, a cow's going to sit there and feed on it. But y'all got a tough hope. And I tell you something else. I told you that you need to sit there and hire, I've been thinking about it, about hiring someone to sit there to bring in industrial and commercial, two other things you need to hire. You need to sit there and hire a full-time soil scientist and a harbinger, someone to sit there and come in and do a temper cruise instead of this clear cutting. That's a, that's the most ugly, sinful thing in the world, is to come in and cut 100 acres of land and it's not even a twig. We know who put that forest there. And we have the responsibility to make sure that it remains there, really. And you, you know, I know, it's rights, I got the right to do this. And really, we don't have any rights. Okay. So y'all do whatever you want, but I can tell you now, you need to sit there and do your homework, or you're going to have some more problems. Take care.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Don H. Stevensburg. I'll make this quick. The Conservation Easement Program sounds intense. Sounds like every stone gets overturned. Sounds like there are ample checks and balances to assure compliance. I'm a firm believer in checks and balances. My hope is that the county will apply the same scrutiny in checks and balances to data centers in the solar industry. And just like the gentleman said, we need to hire qualified staff to evaluate these applications. That's why we're having so many problems after the fact, because we haven't been thoroughly evaluating these solar applications. And it's apparent now, we all know, that the Amazon site was rushed. Not one board member sitting here tonight asked the applicant.
Sir.
Not one.
You're on the wrong topic.
Pardon me.
On the wrong topic.
But it's just a reference that I'm making that I hope that the same scrutiny is applied across the board. And you're absolutely right. I'm on the wrong topic, but nobody asked Amazon a single question. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion.
I, what I'm wondering is, I mean, I assume that the Ag and Forestral Committee and the Rules Committee did good work and have come up with something that they believe works well. My question is, where's the money coming from? Because there could be, as I see it, three possible places. It could come from the taxpayers. It could come from, quote, "profers," which means that it comes from money that those that are attempting to do something in Coal Pepper County are willing to contribute, which right now that money goes to fire and rescue in schools primarily. So I guess number two, it could come from fire and rescue in schools. Or it could come from grants that don't require matches. I'm 100% in support of this, as long as we say it only comes from grants that don't require matches, period. Thank you.
I'd like to compliment staff on putting together the changes to Appendix D. I think the way we're modeling and evaluating the properties that would come up for the Conservation Easement makes a lot of sense. The goal of this is to maintain the rural character of Coal Pepper, and I think we're all in favor of that. But like Mr. Underwood, my concern is, how do we pay for it? And I think we need to be very careful. Profers come from schools, roads, emergency services. I don't know that tax dollars, local tax dollars, should be going to this. They're, they're my concerns. But I think staff has done a really good job updating this program, and it's a tool that will help us going down the road.
I too want to echo the fact that staff put in great work. The Ag and Forestral District Committee rules saw it. We all had a working session on it. And I just want to remind everybody that there are extensive amounts of studies that indicate that every dollar that is spent on open space conservation increases the nearby property values and decreases the chance of local tax hikes. Having more rural area insinuates and allows for a lower tax rate across the board. There's been multiple studies by University of New Jersey and Rutgers and all different research firms about this. And the question does come with taxpayer dollars. In 10 years, we have an estimated $100 million coming in a year from data centers. If you just take a tenth of a cent of that to be able to preserve some of our open space and keep our taxes the lowest in the state, I think that would be well worth it. Same thing with if somebody rezones something into residential and that agriculture production is removed. I don't have a problem with the rollback taxes being applied to something like this. Because overall, this is helping everybody in the county by keeping that rural character, keeping it a place that somebody wants to live, and keeping our taxes low. There's tons of other things that we spend our money on that not everybody in the county benefits from because they either don't use it or don't see it or aren't even in that side of the county. But as an overall benefit to the county, small amounts of money from different resources... But as an overall benefit to the county, small amounts of money from different resources, I think, should be applied to preserving as much as we can.
Well, I'm all for the program, too. I really am. I—I guess my concern is, in using local funds, how do we prevent padding pockets of someone that's not struggling financially? I know Harrison mentioned the financial part as far as struggling farmers, but how about the investors that own property that, you know, we have the potential of using local funds to pad their pockets? I'm not in favor of that.
So this process requires two board approvals before it can ever be accomplished?
Okay. Good. Good. Well, I'm all in favor of the program, but as far as using the proffer money and voting to take money out of our fund, you know, whether it's $200,000 or $500,000 to pay someone to conserve their property, I just—I'm struggling with that a little bit, unless you're right that we have $100 million coming in in the next five or 10 years, or $50 million extra money coming in from the economic development part of the data centers that we have approved, 1%. I'm—I would certainly be fine with it. But as far as taking immediately money away from our Fire and Rescue Association or our schools, then, you know, I just—I'm struggling with that, like Supervisor Underwood and Supervisor Dur brought up. So I'm kind of on the fence here as far as using those local funds to—local taxpayer funds to fund the program.
Mr. Chairman, I—this is a program that, since I've been on the board, one of the things that I wanted to see, being a lifelong resident of Culpeper, is to kind of preserve what I grew up with.
Right.
And when we look at—
I agree.
—when we look at some of these larger farms, and, you know, again, I'm sure with any system that's—that's put in play, as someone said tonight, there needs to be checks and balances. And again, staff, my hat's off to you on what you've done, the homework you've put into this. And when you have a scoring system and all of the tools that you have in place on this, you know, it's not that the first person that comes up is going to be showered with money. But when you have farmers that are getting up in the years, and their kids don't want to take these farms over, it's too hard a work, or they are commuting to the city, what other choice does this guy have, short of putting it into housing developments? And to me, we've heard tonight in—the Citizens Forum, on why a lot of these people moved to Culpeper is because of the rural characteristics, the peace and quiet, the open farmland. And if we just turn a blind eye to this, I can assure you, in my lifetime, we're going to see that Culpeper is no longer Culpeper. And it may be to the point now that we're—we're at the cusp of, we better start acting. And again, this program has been in play in the county. We're just kind of fine-tuning what we've had on the books. And it's not to say that tomorrow, we're going to have an influx of people coming to the county wanting to put all their property in conservation easements, and where's the money going to come from? But over time, as we're getting this thing fine-tuned, I agree wholeheartedly. If we're going to take and put these data centers on this one isolated area of Technology Drive, or McDevitt Drive in the technology zone, I can't think of a better use of a percentage of that revenue than to preserve what we all cherish here on this board. And, you know, if—I'm hoping that the people out in the county agree with me, that—I don't know what other way that we're going to incentivize that farmer, or the kids, once that farmer has passed on, the children of that farmer not to put it into housing developments. So—
Well, Sam or Harrison, can you give us an example of the checks and balances as far as—are there any qualifications when there comes a vote to go forward with putting a value and appropriating the money for a piece of property? I mean, can you give us an example?
A specific example, off the top of my head, I would say we do have mechanisms in there where we say that it is up to the final determination of the board supervisors at both points. We explicitly have a paragraph that says that if there are factors the board finds that could supersede what the scoring system says, that the board of supervisors could act on that.
And, Mr. Chairman, the scoring system itself, in my opinion, acts as a checks and balance, because it checks against our goals in the future land use plan. You know, so we're looking at things like, you know, is that a viable piece for future development? Then no, it's not an ideal easement candidate. But if it's something that we do see in the conference of plan, that we do want to preserve for the next 20 years, or what's pointed out in the future land use to do that, you have that, you have scoring. In my opinion, the scoring system is pretty robust. That's probably the biggest, at least, initial checks and balances that we do. Now, it's a ranking system, and as Harrison mentioned, even though if you score well, it's still going to be up to the board at the end of the day, whether you want to approve the application for it to be under easement. But I think that that's probably the best checks and balance tool that we have right now.
Is there—is there a way that you can steer the scoring system toward the struggling farmer?
Yes.
That Mr. Bates has brought—there is?
There is, actually. We didn't include it in this—in what we provided, because we weren't sure if this was something desired by the board or not. But Clark County actually has a system where they base the appraisal value off of the landowner or landowners, or the LLCs, like, income levels, where if you hit a certain income threshold, 100% of that appraised value, the county would pay for, and then it scales down the higher the income level is, thus making it a very income-targeted procedure. When we first drafted this, we didn't go through that procedure. That is definitely something staff could look into, for sure.
It would be a little bit harder to administrate, in my opinion, is one reason why we probably steered away from that. But also, I really think that the program should stand on its own two feet. Income is obviously big for any individual family and how they make their decisions, but the primary goal of this is to preserve good tracts of land for open space or forest or agricultural use. The income part is always part of it, and every family has to make their own decisions on how they want to relay that property. We're not trying to take that into account here, as far as their individual income family status. I don't think that's the proper way to go. I think it should be based on land use, personally. But I understand that concern of wanting to use tax dollars, and I don't even know that—I would even recommend that the board use local tax dollars. I'm not recommending that, but I think that there are merits to this program for the land itself. When you get into the weeds about whether this person makes too much money to get an easement, I think there—it's—I think that can be complicated, and I don't recommend that the county moves forward with a program like that. That's my opinion on that. And I haven't—that was not a pre-programmed question at all, so that you're getting that answer on the cuff. I'd be happy to look into it more for the board and research that more. But I just don't think initially that would be a good way to go with our program.
Mr. Chairman, as an owner of several hundred acres, I can make my income whatever you want to qualify for this program, and would be happy to do so if I wanted to join it. That said, I wish there were a way that you could put land in perpetuity where you could not have it in an easement, like no heir or no future owner could ever put it in an easement and ever constrict it. That would be a great program. In terms of this program, as staff has said, and it's been said over and over, the ultimate check is, can you count to four? Assuming we're still a seven-member board of supervisors. So if four members of this board are willing to do whatever it is under this program, it can be done. So if somebody out there could convince four of us to send them some money relative to protecting some land, however that may be phrased, we could do it. And my concern is not regarding this board. I—it's the best board I've ever served on. I'm grateful to be here. I have seen boards in surrounding counties make decisions, and then the majority of the board retire. And I'm not making that up. Some are laughing because it may be adjoining their area. And I—we are granting ourselves another tool here to use the—and we're refining the tool. If we want to grant future boards the power to make that decision, using whatever dollars possible, where ultimately it's in our discretion, whatever the scoring decision says, that's what we're doing here. And in terms of who it influences, I'll buy dinner if the person it influences is the one who actually was hungry and struggling and happened to have a few hundred acres as opposed to someone else. Thank you.
So—
When you gonna buy dinner?
When you like it. If you're going to do it, I'll buy you dinner at the place you pick.
I think—I think that there's a lot of getting in the weeds here about how this thing is funded. I don't think you've got to be concerned at how it's going to be funded. Because if your intent is to try to maintain what we have here, which is bringing all these people here, then that's got to be weighed. And I wouldn't worry about a board—this board or future boards—taking away from fire and rescue in the schools to promote this program. That's not going to happen. If it does, they're going to get changed. If people aren't happy with what you're doing, they're going to take you out. But you've got to realize, the last time we had a big downturn in the economy, the whole country, agriculture carried this county through it. When there wasn't a house being built, there was nothing going on, but the farmers keep farming. And that dollar turns more times than your local economy than any dollar out there, five at minimum. And every time that dollar turns, there's tax generated and people getting paid off of it. So the importance of having a balance of industry and agriculture is the biggest industry in the county. It's important to have that here, because it can help carry you through bad times. But you—you—I think you're missing the point if you're worried about how you're going to fund it. We've got probably the second lowest tax rate in the Commonwealth of Virginia, sitting right next to Washington DC. That's not going to continue. It can't continue, or we will be Northern Virginia as we move forward. But I think that if your intent is to try to maintain what—some of what we got here that makes us such a great place to live and raise a family, then put this program in place and let the chips fall where they may. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, one last question. For the ones that are supporting this, which I'm on the fence, I'll be honest. Timeline, and Ms. Gugino again brought up the economic development, the data center revenue that could be coming in in the next five years, seven years. What's the timeline that the board or staff would like to see this implemented? Are we going to defer until we do see a potential revenue coming in? Are we going to automatically go out in a year from now and start appraising properties and appropriating money to people out of our—out of our budget? That's a question for Ms. Gugino, Mr. Bates, Mr. Rosenberg, whomever, or staff.
So this is application-driven, so it's actually landowner-driven. We wouldn't be out soliciting parcels for this program. It would be somebody coming to us.
Okay. Well, if they come to us, are we going to instigate this program immediately? Or are we going to wait until we see some of this technology revenue coming in? Or what's the plan there?
I would like to see us go after the grants each year through the state that offer to fund this with no local matches, so that we do have some money available if somebody comes up with a dire need of income level or whatnot, that we could help facilitate either them going with an easement with outdoor foundation, or DCR, or whichever, or us buying it. But I would like to see us start looking at avenues of non-taxpayer funding to bring funding into this, to be able to be pre-positioned when we do have an applicant.
So can we agree on local funding being used once we start seeing that revenue—that additional revenue coming in that we don't have now, since we have $100 million cost for schools coming up? I'm just asking Supervisor Rosenberg. I mean, we have $100 million school costs coming up. So can we negotiate here a little bit and—and start the program potentially two, three years down the road, when we may have some revenue, additional revenue coming in?
So the ordinance is already in existence. We can't stop that. All we're doing is amending it.
But we're accelerating—the program.
No, we're not accelerating it. We're refining it. We're defining it. We're making it more—
Has been in place.
It's here, I know that. But we're talking about appropriating money to the program—
No.
No.
We're not talking about appropriating anything.
When the applications come in.
You may not get an application. If you do get an application, then you move accordingly relative to funding that's available or not available. I think that to sit here and figure out, hey, you're going to fund this program without an application, it's ludicrous in my book. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, you could be talking—a—you could be talking a 50-acre parcel or a 1,000-acre parcel. And again, this has been on the books. This isn't something new. This has been fine-tuned to the point that—and the question to staff would be, over the—since this has been on the books, is there—can you give a number, a round number, of how many people have ever approached the county about it? Okay? So there—the—again, I don't think I would get—our feathers all ruffled here about—as Supervisor Rosenberg said about how we're going to fund something, but I think that we need to fine-tune the program as it was written, and start preparing, as Ms. Gugino has said, looking at these sources, to have them lined up when we do get somebody coming forward. You know, I think you're—you're putting the cart before the horse here a little bit. I mean, and I—I agree with you on $100 million debt service on these schools, but I don't think that we're going to be—I'm not going to support canceling the school. If—and if we don't have the funds in this—in this—to support this project, we wouldn't entertain the application. The application's not going to pass. So I mean, again, you're not—we're not pinpointing, is it a 50-acre parcel, a 500-acre parcel, or—I mean, that's to be determined.
Sam, in the presentation you gave tonight, the funding sources you listed were rollback taxes, grants, some other things, proffers. I didn't hear in their direct allocation or being part of the—the regular budget.
No, no.
So that is not part of this proposal?
You—you—the board certainly could allocate that if you ever—if a board ever chose to do that. We're not saying that that's a preference of this board or anything, or suggesting that staff would even encourage a board to do that. But that is an option. You can—you can set aside dollars for that type of program.
But it is not part of the proposed changes to Appendix D?
Not at all. And, you know, there—is—and Harrison pointed out, you know, in—in the code that's drafted, when—the—if the board were to consider applications, and there's not sufficient available funding, whatever that may be, through grants, proffers, or anything that's been dedicated by the county for the program, basically, it kicks it to the next fiscal year if the applicant wants to wait that long. So there are cycles that it would go through, and the board would have to determine with each and every application whether there's going to be funding or not, ultimately, so.
I see this as relatively low risk. I'm sure the board debated this quite a bit in 2007. It did no damage to the county over the last 16 years. So if we were to pass this, it'll probably do no damage to the county over the next 16 years. And that's okay. I think it does refine a tool in a way that concerns me, but I believe that my concerns are in the minority, not in the majority, of the people in this county. To be—I believe that the majority is closer to Mr. Rosenberg's perspective, to tell you the truth. And if there are grants available that don't have matches, that we could apply for, to not have a tool that would be available to do it, when a lot of people want it done, perhaps we should pass this. But I'm not going to make the motion.
Anybody else? Or entertain a motion?
I just have one—one more comment, and I—I think perhaps we should pass this. But I—I believe this is a tool in how we are going to control growth in Culpeper. It is not going to be the solution, and it is not—there is not enough money out there to preserve the farmland, to stop growth and sprawl in Culpeper. This is a tiny little piece of it. We need, I believe, staff— We need, I believe, staff or someone to begin working with the board to develop a plan of how we are gonna go forward and how we want to go forward to look at the growth in Culpeper. And I know that's kind of off the topic for tonight, but it's, it's important.
I agree.
I'll have a question.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the adoption of the amendments to Appendix D as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. Six one, Ms. Ellis, in favor? Okay. I think that is it. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, may I address the gravel road issue?
Sure.
So I'd like to say that we do care. I haven't received phone calls in a while. When I did, I addressed them with staff and our county attorney, which have both indicated that due to the private nature of the development, that we had our hands tied. Now that we've been provided more details and have listened to you guys tonight, I'm sure that we will take another look with staff. But I want to make sure that you guys do know that we do care, and we care about both agritourism in Culpeper, but we want it to occur safely. So I just want you to know that we will be looking into this again and figuring out if there is any way that we can assist. But I also suggest that you reach out to your delegate and state senator as well, since this does deal with state code. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned.